All right, let's do it. Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. In attendance today, we have myself, Chair of the Committee, Mark Conway, representing the 4th District, Councilman Z. Cohen, representing the 1st District, Councilwoman Porter, who stepped out for just a moment, representing the 10th District, representing the Office of the President, we've got Preston Lewis, and representing the Mayor's Office, I've got Nina Themelis. This afternoon, we're gonna hold a committee hearing on Bill 23-0180R, informational hearing, Summer 2023 Baltimore City Pool Closures, for the purpose of inviting representatives of the Department of Recreation and Parks, Department of General Services, the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development, the Office of the City Administrator, and any other relevant parties to the one report why Cherry Hill Splash Park, Lake Clifton Pool, and Patterson Park Pool have not yet opened for the 2023 season, two, discuss the impact of these closures on city residents and the ability of the city to secure funding for future infrastructure improvements, and three, discuss solutions to prevent future closures. This bill was introduced on July 13, 2023, by Councilman Cohen, and I'll open the floor to comments from the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you to, I see Deputy Mayor Girasa for being here. Thank you to Director Moore and your team, as well as all the agency staff in attendance. In the hottest summer on record, every single child in Baltimore deserves to swim in their neighborhood public pool. That is the very least that our city government can do. And this summer, we fell short. Let me start with a few truths. Pool closures are not about a lack of caring for our kids. We are lucky to have a mayor who has invested record levels of funding in Wreckin' Parks and in our youth. The Be More Summer Plan, with pool parties and midnight basketball, was well executed by the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. The issue of public pool closures is a national problem. This summer CNN and the New York Times documented disinvestment, lifeguard shortages, and infrastructure challenges in cities as diverse as Louisville, Los Angeles, San Francisco, and Philadelphia. This is, Madam Director, an equity issue. According to a 2018 study by the USA Swimming Foundation, 79% of children in families with household incomes less than $50,000 have no or low swimming ability. According to 2020 data from the CDC, unintentional drowning is the number-one cause of death for children ages 1 to 4 in the United States. It is both a mental health crisis and a matter of physical safety. And in Baltimore, we have strong, capable, passionate leadership in Wreckin' Parks. Director Reginald Moore, Jasia Smith, and the team are thoughtful leaders, and I am grateful for their ongoing collaboration. But this year, multiple pools were not open, and proper notice was not given. We must do better. This hearing is about accountability. I believe system failures in procurement and communication need to be accounted for and fixed before next summer. As the council rep for District 1, I have firsthand knowledge of these two challenges when it comes to Patterson Park Pool, but I think that what happened at Patterson Pool is not dissimilar to what happened for a large part of the summer at Lake Clifton, Middle Branch, and the Cherry Hill Splash Pad. Let's begin with procurement. I've heard directly from contractors that they don't want to pursue work with the city because we don't always pay on time, we aren't able to work out issues when they invariably rise, or because work will be delayed significantly. Thanks to our delegation in the state legislature, we secured funding in FY22, available July 1, 2021, to renovate the Patterson Park Pool. Additional funding was secured for FY23 for the kiddie pool and the bathhouse. Yet, when the work went out to bid for the first time, no contractors wanted to work on the pool, and that substantially delayed the renovation work. It should have been completed well before this summer. That's not just Z. Cohen's interpretation, this is the written justification I received from Wreckin' Parks. Quote, "We had to bid this project twice, as the first advertisement yielded no bids." Our original schedule would have had the projects completed and open for Summer 2023, but the need to rebuild, rebid, delayed the projects and have pushed construction into the 2023 swim season. Very unfortunate. We need to sort out our procurement issues to prevent future unnecessary or extended pool closures, and to ensure that we are in the strongest position to receive state funding going forward. Now, let's talk about communication. Wreckin' Parks did not proactively communicate to us that the pool would need to close. I found out about the closure because my staff proactively met with the aquatics team in late spring to pitch the agency about piloting a junior lifeguard pipeline through Youth Works. Following the approval of the renovation contract at the April 5 Board of Estimates meeting, rumors began to swirl in southeast community, and my constituents were rightly demanding clarity and action. In April, I joined the 46th State delegation in calling on Wreckin' Parks to implement a temporary solution to keep the pool open for the summer and to meet with the community. Wreckin' Parks made a valiant effort to keep the pool open for the summer, but they never communicated any action plan to the community. The meeting we asked for in our letter still has not happened. Every day, first while repairs were being attempted, and then once Wreckin' Park knew the pool would be inoperable for the season, families have come to the gates with towels and swimsuits, only to find locked doors and no answers. It was high noon, but the patrons were left in the dark. I continue to observe a big gap in my community's understanding of the process and frustration that folks are left in the dark about when, why, what, and how renovations are being made. When we don't communicate, we betray the trust that our residents place in us to lead, and people lose faith in government. In southeast Baltimore, when faced with this challenge, our community did what Baltimoreans do. We came together and found a solution. Today at 5:00, we will open a community-driven pop-up splash pad just outside the locked doors of the Patterson Park Pool. We'll be donating the water features to Wreckin' Park this fall, so this pop-up splash pad can be implemented in any community where pools are slated for renovation going forward. I'd like to invite everyone here to join us for the grand opening today at 5:00 PM. We'll have pizza and ice cream. The joy that this splash pad generates is contagious. My ask today, in closing, is that we work together to fix our issues. Let's commit to specific, actionable steps to prevent future problems. Our residents, who pay taxes with the expectation of fully functioning city services, deserve nothing less. Our children, who are in desperate need of fun, engaging, summer programming, and a break from record heat, deserve nothing less. And with that, I turn it back to Chair Conway. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. At the request of the sponsor, we are gonna switch up a little bit the order of the hearing today. We're gonna allow for testimony first, and then jump to our agencies for their presentation. So what I'll do is, for folks that are here, and folks that are here virtually, that wish to testify, we're gonna give you two minutes to testify on this resolution. We'll start with the folks that are here, if you would like to testify. We're gonna start with Brian Baker. Make sure to press the button on the right. There we go.
Thank you. My name is Brian Baker. I'm the Director of Staff Development for Fitness, Fun, and Games. We're a nonprofit organization that provides before and after-school programs at 14 locations throughout Baltimore City. We've been in operation for over 30 years. I've been with the organization since 2018. The closure of the pool at Patterson Park specifically has had a significant impact on our programs, especially those at Abbottson Elementary, Patterson Park Public Charter, and Hampstead Hill Academy. We began planning for the summer programs in late February to early March, and access to city pools is a highlight of our summer program and a service that we've relied on for many years. Admittedly, we didn't confirm that the Patterson Pool would be open, because when a service is available year after year, you begin to rely on it, and you expect it to continue to be available. And since we never heard otherwise, we had no reason to anticipate that this summer would be any different. I was first told about the pool closure when one of my staff went to the park and just noticed the pool was not filled. I emailed the aquatics department about it and was told that it would be open in, quote, "mid-June." On June 26, we sent a group of students to the pool, only to find that it was still closed, and they had to turn around and go back to school. I emailed again, and was then told that, quote, "I could not give you an accurate date as to when it would be open." We looked for other solutions in the city. We were told that we would need to pay an entry fee to access other city pools during camp hours, or we could go to the pools when it was open to the public, but if they were at capacity, we could be denied access. So this sort of uncertainty has made it difficult to make plans as an organization that depends on having city pools available to our children. Some challenges that created for us were the need to get new permission slips from parents, because we were sending kids to different locations than we planned. We incurred the cost of providing a bus to transport students to a different location rather than their local pools, and we also had to make changes to our daily schedule to account for the travel time that it took to get to the alternate locations. The pool at Patterson Park provides our students the opportunity to get exercise and to be outdoors while still avoiding the heat of the summer. It provides recreation for our youth in a fun and engaging way, and allows some of our students to learn to swim for the first time, which is a valuable life skill and could potentially save their life. Our children were denied those benefits for several weeks this summer, as we saw other solutions that may have been found earlier had the closure of Patterson Park's pool been communicated earlier and more clearly. I'm happy that Councilman Cohen's office has worked with us to develop the splash pad initiative, and I only wish that the aquatics department could have been more proactive in ensuring the pool was ready for summer use, or if there were circumstances preventing it from opening, that barrier could have been communicated, so we could have found alternate solutions sooner. In closing, I'd like to call for some accountability on the reasons as to the pool closures and the lack of communication around it. Our hope is that we can better understand what's happened to prevent it from occurring again in the future. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Brian. Next up, we have Ernest Lee.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you in this hearing. My name is Ernest Ley. I am the President of Patterson Park Neighborhood Association. Before I became president two years ago, I also bought my first house in the neighborhood where I have lived since 2015. One of the major drivers of my decision to live there was the nearby Patterson Park, with its running paths, greenery, a duck pond, and, of course, a public swimming pool. I remember well going to the pool on weekends to swim some laps, or joining in swim nights during the summer, where people partied with music and threw beach balls around and had a great time. The pool has always been a vital resource for the community, especially for our youth. We know this because back in the days before the pool was closed this summer, we had an issue with children sneaking into the pool area and swimming in it after hours without supervision or lifeguards. I'm sure you all remember some controversial incidents which occurred last year. Last year, Patterson Park Neighborhood Association was able to work with city government to provide some financial support for a pool night for the children. It's one of the actions we've taken that I am most proud of. Now, we all have opinions about how to handle issues with our city's youth breaking into places where they shouldn't be, but from this, I have two takeaways. Number one is that the youth of our community really wants to play in the water during the summer. And number two, if I had children and the worst trouble they got into was breaking into a pool area, I would consider myself very fortunate. Teenagers are going to push boundaries and do things they shouldn't. That is not a Baltimore thing, that is a universal human condition. If they have a place to play, hang out, and socialize with each other, then they are less likely to get into trouble. This year, neighbors noticed that the pool at Patterson Park was still closed, even though at that point, it was nearly July. Several neighbors told me that they had tried to find out when the pool would be opening and got no response. We were then told the pool would be opening, thanks to a combination of funding from the state level and pressure applied by representatives of the General Assembly. This news was greeted with great happiness. Unfortunately, several more weeks passed, and it became clear that the pool would not be opening this summer after all. When we were finally officially informed that the pool would be closed this summer, it was already a foregone conclusion. We have worked instead with other organizations and with members of the community to set up a splash pad, which Councilman Cohen has alluded to, which will be set up just outside the pool house with water features that were delivered from out of state. PPN A is currently recruiting volunteers to oversee that splash pad, and after this hearing, I will be attending the official launch event later this afternoon. We had a soft launch on Sunday, where I was, and despite the fact that we spread word about it literally at the last minute, dozens of neighbors came out with their children to play. The response from the community has been overwhelmingly positive. At the same time, we all recognize it is only a substitute. Sprinklers are not the same as a pool. The water features are designed to have children climbing on them, not teenagers or adults. As a representative for my neighbors and as a citizen of the city, I feel very strongly that we cannot allow another summer to pass without the pool being open. It is not for me to offer an opinion on what happened with funding for the pool or for its repairs, that is for you to determine. What we ask is that you find out how this came to pass, and that you take action to ensure not only that the pool will be open next year, but also that something like this never happens again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernest. Next up, before I actually go to the next person, I just want to acknowledge Councilwoman Ramos and Councilman Glover have joined us in the meeting. Thank you. Next up, I've got Colin Thompson.
Hello, everyone. My name is Colin Thompson. I live in northeast Baltimore. I attend Reach Partnership High School, and I'm currently in the 11th grade. Today, I will be speaking on the impact of the most recent recreational pool closures. I feel as though that there should be way more pools open across the city, and that there should be no more types of limitation on where to enjoy family and the impact of community. I say that because the only pool that I know of that is open is the Lake Clifton Pool. Pools bring peace, pools bring joy, and they also bring happiness, so why not open up more pools for our young people? It can be a strain without having more effective communication towards the status of pools and its development. We give credit to both Councilman Cohen and the administration for the collective efforts. When the pools are open in the most diverse communities, it keeps young people more engaged as a public safety and crime prevention strategy. It becomes more frustrating to go to a pool and see that it's closed with no types of heads up or no warning. So why not open up more pools for our young people? We don't want to see politicians pointing fingers, we just want to prevent the issue in the future, so that way we can have a better summer, and create more fond memories, and make Baltimore once again the greatest city in America. Thank you, guys, for having me.
Thank you, Colin. Is there anyone else who is here today that would wish to testify? Please, come up, let us know your name, and you've got two minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Lucia Islas. I am the President of Comitê Latino de Baltimore, but I am also a single mother. So I'm gonna talk from my bottom of my heart. I wrote something, but I just want to explain everything that I feel. I've been living in this city for about 16 years. Since I'm a single mother with four children, I'm having struggles with everything, and this is about transportation, money, et cetera. My kids go to Patterson Parish Church School, which I love it. Since they are in front of Patterson Park, they are used to go to the park as recess time. One of the most important things that I want to talk about the pool is that that is the place where my kids, I have one that is 24 and the other one is 21, they used to be working over there. And the swimming pool, the public swimming pool, was the time that they can have fun, they can have the chance to interact with another people, that they were now Latino. They were a lot of people, which make us different. You can interact with another people. Another thing that I want you to know is that, I don't know why the reason is that the pool is not open, but the kids really miss them. It's the time, it's the opportunity, and I think they need it. They need it. And not everyone has money to go to the beach, not everyone has money to get a car, taxi, a bus, so they really need it. So even though, I think that even though the summer is almost over, they need a splash. Even myself, if I'm working every day, I need a chance to go and have some fresh air and get wet by myself. So I think that even though the summer is gonna finish, please, please, let us have that. Our people need it. I don't live anymore around Highland Town, but my place is Highland Town. In my community organization, we have more than five members, and everyone is asking why the pool is closed. Why? I don't know. But right now, thanks to everyone that is making this possible, they can have a smile in their face. So please, just listen me from the bottom of my heart. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else here in person that would like to testify? Okay, seeing no folks in person, do we have anybody virtually joining us via WebEx that would like to testify? Please use the raise hand function, and we'll unmute you and allow you to speak for two minutes. Okay, seeing no further testimony. I'm gonna turn it over to the agencies, first and foremost, with Recreation and Parks. I understand you guys have a presentation. Director.
Good afternoon, Chairman Conway, Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Glover, our colleagues, and BCRP staff. As Director of Recreation and Parks, I look forward to deliberation conversations surrounding our existing swimming pools. We will discuss the agency's vision for the existing 23 swimming pools and splash pads. Our PowerPoint presentation will review the overall capital funding, existing pool funding, the agency's vision, current year pool operations, and the three pools that was called into question. As of August 21 of 2023, we have seen over 77,000 visitors at our existing 15 swimming pools and splash pads. In addition, we have held 16 pool parties on either Friday or Saturday night during the summer, where we've seen over 2,300 teens have a great time with no incidents. We currently have six pools that are either under construction or in design, and will soon be out for bid. One pool will receive mechanical upgrades, which is the Cherry Hill Pool, and one splash pad is in design. Since my arrival in July of 2017, our agency has focused on and addressed the many needs of our existing infrastructure, which consists of swimming pools, recreation centers, playgrounds, and parks. In FY 2018 adopted budget, which was my first day in, the first budget that I came into, BCRP received zero capital dollars for pool upgrades or renovations. Upon my tour of our various facilities, it was evident that there was a need for more investment in our pool infrastructure. You will see shortly the agency's clear vision and focus for our pools. While we're here to discuss the closures of Patterson Park, Lake Clifton, and Cherry Hill outdoor pools, I want to quickly center our conversation around our overall summer swimming pool efforts. I want to first and foremost thank the men and women of our agency, our aquatics teams, our maintenance team, what they do on a daily basis to make sure that these pools operate year to year. And we're talking about pools that are 50-plus years old in the infrastructure that have lacked funding. BCRP has a process that we implement every season, from working closely with our contractors to winterize the pools each and every season, to working in the winter months with our contractors to clearly establish a plan for how we will proceed the next season. While we focus on the inspections and the mechanical systems, the repairs, and the pipes, but due to all of our best efforts, there are times that we will have mechanical breakdowns year to year because of our aging mechanical system. Good example, Lake Clifton. Lake Clifton Pool opened and operated this year. Upon operating, within the first couple weeks, the pump motor went out. We had to replace it, we had to order it. We got a new pump motor in June, and what happened? It operated to July 5, it went down again. I was in conversation with the councilwoman. We had to replace additional piping. But since we've addressed those things and we have reopened that pool, we have had no other problems and has been opening seven days a week. And shortly, our agency will talk about our strategies around how we overall pool systems, but I want to stress to each and every one that our agency is committed to not only how we continue to improve our swimming pools, but how we address our rec centers, how we continue to invest in our playgrounds. As you all know, there's 20-plus playgrounds that we're getting ready to install this next year, and there's over 124 playgrounds in this city. But that is the most recent investment in our play structures. So we're here to listen today. If you all spare just a few more minutes, we're just gonna go through, quickly through a PowerPoint presentation to kind of talk about where we are, where we've been, and we're ready to dialogue and work together on how we can address these needs. And thank you for allowing us to be here to speak about this important matter. So Adam, who's gonna start first?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Adam Borman, Chief of Capital Development, Baltimore City Wreckin' Parks. We're gonna start a little broad here and then focus down to the pools. So first, historic CIP funding analysis. Next slide, please.
Okay.
All right. So this is a look at funding over the last 21 fiscal years, city, state, federal, and other. You see a little aberration in FY 23. That was 97 million, large in part to ARPA funding and one-time COVID-related funding at the state level. Next slide, please. If you take away those one-time investments, you get a clearer look at how funding has really trended over the years. You can see, you know, 20 years ago, we were closer to 5 million than anything else, and have kind of slowly ascended since then. Over the last five or six years, we have seen more investment at the state level, and slow incrementally increased funding at the state. All in all, we're averaging about 16 million, and 7 million from the city. I think we can all agree that with the amount of funding that we have, we are limited in how many things we can touch, but we are moving forward. So, next slide. Further breaking this down, we're looking directly at investment in pools. You can see, over the last 20 years, the first 15 or so, there was very little, kind of surface little renovations, no significant kind of capital level. Projects were done. FY 19, that's the first year that Director Moore and myself were here, you can see investments start to happen, and then, of course, in FY 23, those COVID dollars went directly into this pool attack. Next slide, please. One more, please. So just looking broader at my staff and our organization, of course, Director Moore arrived in July 2017. He made the intelligent decision to promote me that October. I've been here for 13 years now, originally as a landscape architect and design planner, and then the chief since the fall of 2017. Together, we organized the Capitol Office to be more nimble and able to move faster. We created a contracted administration wing. We took that out of relying upon other agencies such as DPW and DOT. And of course, when I first started, we had 15 staff. We are now up to 37 positions, and we are moving. Next slide. So over the last 18 months, we have completed or begun construction on 33 capital projects. This is totaling over $60 million. If you think back a couple slides to the fact that we're receiving roughly 16 million a year on average, you can see how we are basically quadrupling our output to input ratio here. And when you look at this list, I just want to remind everyone that construction is messy, construction is inconvenient. Top left is the Druid Hill Aquatic Center. That pool was closed for two years, but now you can go there any day of the week and see hundreds of people enjoying that pool, and really see the success of a proper capital job. So I want to just remind people here that it's not fun, closing anything, but all these projects you see listed here, folks had to go without before they could see the kind of fruits of our labor. Director Moore?
Thank you, Adam. And this next slide really tells the story, and to some, it may look like a bunch of years, but to me, it tells me the age of our swimming pools. One of the pools in question, Patterson Park, was built in 1953, with minimal to no upgrades over that period of time, other than some mechanical things that would go out. But in 2022, as Mr. Borman spoke about, we saw a significant change in what investment with patients can do, and that is the Druid Hill Aquatic. and that is the Druid Hill Aquatics Facility. But what I really want to take these last couple of slides to do is really let you all see what we're dealing with on a daily basis. So this next slide, it tells the story. Like, this is the mechanical systems that our current pools are operating with. And what our team does, in some cases, some of our mechanicals, some of our pump motors, we have to call and research all over the country just to find someone that's buying or selling those pump motors. They're just that old. So you're talking about over 50 years of deferred maintenance. You're talking about outdated and inefficient systems. I recently, about a month ago, walked with Mainline, who's our contractor that's doing the Patterson Park Pool. And what I asked him to do with me was to walk and look and assess every one of our park pools that are not getting upgraded right now. And one of the things he pointed to is the turnover ratio, that the amount of time that it takes us to turn over a complete pool is so outdated. And it's because things change, people change. You know, people wear different lotions and they come into the pools. But because we're still operating off of these old systems, we're going to have downtime. And there's going to be times where we want a pool to open, and we can work, bust our butts to get that pool open. And Lake Clifton, that was extremely frustrating. Less than two weeks in, the pool is down? That's not something we want. But that is the reality. And then the expense that it takes us every year to get these pools up and running, it is no small feat, no cheap task. So I wanted to share those things because I really want to talk about where we're going. And I don't want to get stuck into the past and the lack of funding. I want to really talk about the vision, the future, and the excitement of what we can do and what we will be doing. And so it's this renewed focus. So in 2019, we pull out an RFP because one of the first things we had to do was we needed to assess every one of our bodies of water. And during that and with that assessment, it also identified and gave us a ranking system, a scoring system to tell us the conditions of each and every one of our swimming pools. And June of 2020, we actually received that final report, and we immediately start working on funding, as you start seeing in 2019, to focus this. So how do we move forward? What is our vision moving forward? Our vision moving forward is we want modern-day, modernized swimming pools. We want zero times where pools have been down. We've seen that work with Druid Hill. We've seen also Oliver Pool, John Murdoch Pool is another pool that had been closed for 15 years before I arrived, and we got the money to get that pool back open. And it's open year to year with no problems because it's up-to-date equipment. So we're so excited. Patterson Park Pool is under construction. Will be going on construction soon, but it's a contract that's already been awarded for it. Ambrose Kennedy, if you go by that pool, is actually in construction. They start demoing, but there's seven more pools that's coming online. Can you imagine? We're talking about 20-plus playgrounds that we're getting ready to do. We're talking about rec centers that we're improving, but we're talking about nine swimming pools over the next couple of years that will be new and up-to-date and modernized. And it's because of the commitment, as Councilman Cohen stated earlier, this mayor has been committed. He's committed 120 million, which includes 41 million, and we're putting that money to use. So we have a prioritized list of how we're going to move these pools forward. So I just want to give you a sneak peek into what we're looking at. To the left is Greater Mile Pool, that is soon to be going out for bid. The one to the right is Tawanda, soon to also be going out to bid. And then Coast Spring, that's in Northeast Baltimore. And one of the things I would tell you, when I toured these pools in Northeast Baltimore, one of the things I was so surprised and shocked is that there was a metal fence inside the swimming pool that separated the shallow pool from the deep pool. No sense at all. So our kids, that's what our kids have been going through. So with this commitment, with this newfound opportunity, you're going to see two bodies of water that you're starting to see in most of our pools that you see here as an example. So our pools will be up more than they're down. So I'm really excited about where we're going there. But I also want to take a minute to really just highlight a couple pictures of our young people this summer having a great time. Like I said, we had over 2,300 kids that attended the six different teen events over the summer. Really was excited about their turnout and the excitement that they had. But the one that warms my heart is our aquatics team a year ago realized that we had a staffing deficit. And they went out, went into high schools, recruited kids. They had eight lifeguard training classes, which yielded us an additional 92 new lifeguards, which this year you hadn't had to hear anyone complain about. We had a lifeguard shortage because of our team. So our lifeguards had an opportunity to showcase their skills and their abilities. And I want to share with this council that one of my lifeguard teams recently saved a man's life, not at the swimming pool. He was riding his bike in the park. And they was called to help render aid until the 911 medics could get there. But that is the people that we have that's serving in our pools every day, these young people, and they do a phenomenal job. And so quickly, what I want to spend this last few minutes talking about is the three pools in question. The first one I want to speak about is Patterson Park. Councilman Cohen is absolutely right. In FY 21, we received $110,000 for design. We secured a contract by February of 2021 to have GWO design not only Patterson, but also Ambrose Kennedy. In FY 22, we received an additional 1.9 million in state funding. As you can see, we can receive money, but it still has to be a design. There still is a process. So as you can see on this slide is that from March of 2021 until September of 2022, the pools was in design, both pools. But that's not just the architect designing. We have to also go through stormwater. We have to get stormwater permits approval. That's a process. And then with being swimming pools, we also had to get approved from the Health Department. So what I can tell you is while we did have this money, we was just not sitting on the money. We had to go through the process. And September 2023, the pools was advertised. So in less than 16 months, we was able to get two pools designed and out for bid. I think that's a phenomenal turnaround when you look at some of our construction projects. But as Councilman Cohen stated, as we went through this bid process, there was no bids, no one submitted a bid originally. So we extended a second bid date to December 14th. And on that date, we received one contractor. We received that contractor. We have to go through the procurement process of curing that person, vetting that person. If there was some challenges with that bid, because there was the one person, we gave them a chance to cure that work because of the luck we've had bidding. And in April of 2023, the contract was awarded for Ambrose Kennedy and for Patterson. And we, as an agency, acknowledge, and we will acknowledge, that yes, there are some improvements that we can do from a communication standpoint, and we will acknowledge that, and we have addressed that, and we will make sure that we communicate better with our community as well as our elected officials. But what I wanted to also highlight is that when we made this decision to close the pool, there was an ask of us to try to get Patterson Park Pool open. And while it was not the easiest task, our team tried everything possible to get the pool open. The first flood happened in April. And when that flood happened, we lost the two pump motors. So now again, as I told you, because our systems are old, it's not like we can just go grab a motor off the shelf. We had to order two 25-horsepower motors. We got those motors. We had a second flood in June. And I have pictures in a couple of slides that we're going to show. And then finally, on July 8th, seems like we was turning in the right direction. We had a clear blue pool. And on July 9th, the pools flooded for a third time. So I just want to highlight this next slide to say that our agency made every effort to include extending over $100,000 in trying to get these pools operational this summer. And while, and our best effort we did, no one is happy that we didn't get to open the Patterson Park Pool, but the reality is that pool need to go on renovation and construction. And so I close by saying, we're here to be colleagues. We're here to be partners to work with council and the community, but there are realities. And those realities is that we have an aging pool system that until we continue to turn these systems over and improve these systems, there's a greater chance that from summer to summer, we're going to lose pools due to mechanical, due to other unforeseen challenges because of the conditions of the pool. And what this slide shows you is the three dates I spoke about and the flooding of those pools. And so finally, Clifton. You're absolutely right. Clifton opened Monday weekend. Due to the motor failures, that pool closed down. We had to replace it. The pool reopened on 24th of June. Again, there was mechanical issues. We had to close again on July 5th. But on July 22nd, that pool did reopen, and it's been open seven days a week. And then Cherry Hill. Cherry Hill Pool had not opened since the summer of 2019. Oh. I thought it was a delay, but... So in 2019 summer, the Cherry Hill Pool operated, worked fine. Then that pool was closed down because of construction. And since that construction, in 2021, when that new rec center opened, we started immediately trying to address the issues of the Cherry Hill Pool. We went through our routine maintenance checks and start filling that pool, but that pool could not hold water. We brought in a leak detector company that determined that the entire drain line was corroded and needed to be replaced, which means now you're having to not just replace a pipe, but you got to remove a great deal of the pool to replace that pipe and then fill it, hoping that it would work. So we made a decision not to open Cherry Hill because we had the new indoor aquatics facility at Middle Branch, and it operated seven days a week, and we saw an average attendance of 265 people. So while the Cherry Hill Outdoor Pool was not operational, we had an alternative for the community that was on the same site. So my last slide just really shares that here's our approach to swimming pools and how we plan to move them forward. But there again, in any, this is a guide for us. If something catastrophic happened that we got to shift the pool, then we will do that. But what I, this slide shows in my closing is we do have a plan. And it's just going to take time and patience for us all as we work through this. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I will yield back to you, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Director. We are going to continue moving through agency reports and then open up the floor to questioning. Give me one moment. Next up, we have General Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. DGS stands by its report in that they don't have involvement with capital investments with the pools.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Matt Garbark, Director for the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development. We stand by our report. We listed a number of sources of funding that the Department of Recreation and Parks does apply for, and that has been programmed. Be happy to answer any questions the committee may have.
Thank you, Director. City Solicitor?
Good afternoon. Yeah, there we go. Elena DePietre from the Baltimore City Law Department. The law department approves the bill for formal legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Elena. Next up is the City Administrator's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations, representing the Office of the City Administrator. Just wanting to underscore the record investments that the administration has made between fiscal '22 and fiscal '24. Over $155 million have been invested in capital improvements in the Department of Recreation and Parks. Separately, due to the fact that we had that 2019 evaluation and deep-level analysis, the number of pool closures that have to happen in order to make, kind of, get back up to speed and make sure that we have adequate facilities does take time. And then finally, as far as prompt payment systems, we understand that there have been lags between invoices being paid. And since the prompt payment dashboard was initiated in September of 2022, there has been a 76% reduction in invoices that haven't been paid over 30 days or more. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. Nina of Many Trades. And finally, the Office of the Comptroller.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Casey Keller from the Office of the Comptroller. We stand by our report and defer to the agencies most affected. Thanks.
Thank you, Casey. And Civil Rights and Equity? Please turn on your mic.
Good afternoon. Dana Moore, Director of the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. And here today, also wearing my second hat, which is the Chief Equity Officer for the City of Baltimore. This whole situation has been sort of styled in part as an equity situation. So I want to start with a little bit of a story, if I might. Back in 1948, when my family was living in Topeka, Kansas, my uncle, Uncle Phil Burton, sued the Water Authority of Topeka because some of his siblings could swim in the pool because they were fair enough, and others couldn't because they weren't fair enough. And he thought that was an inequity, and it was. And so wearing, using his law degree, he sued the water system. He forgot that his father worked for the water system. So when he got home after having filed that lawsuit, his father said, my grandfather said, "You've got to leave Topeka because this lawsuit is not favored at all." And that is when Uncle Phil left Topeka and moved to Seattle. And he stayed in Seattle thereafter and had an illustrious career. So when we talk about inequity over pools, for my family, it's real. My mother, who is 90, just revealed to me last week that she does not know how to swim. This from a mother who made sure that all four of her children learned how to swim. And when I put all of this together and understanding the inequities and the discrimination that Black and Brown people have suffered for decades over pools, it's just a pool. It's very real for my family. So the Office of Equity and Civil Rights has done a seven-page report on the equity aspects of the legislation. We stand by that report and commend it all for your reading. But what we really want to highlight today is we recognize the remarkable investment that has been made in all forms of recreation by the Scott Administration. It's phenomenal that $121 million has been devoted to addressing historic wrongs, just like my family suffered in Kansas. It is a national issue, absolutely. But we are finally, as a city, addressing that. We are impressed as an office. I am impressed as the City's Chief Equity Officer with the plan to address these historic wrongs, the methodical approach. The images that we've seen, that were shared today, are... shocking isn't exactly the right word, but when we see those images and understand that Black and Brown children have been asked to have less for years, that we're now doing something to address it is commendable. Many of you know, if you follow me on Facebook, I walk through Druid Hill Park every Sunday, not so much here lately. But our walk takes us, we begin the walk by the brand-new pool. We, halfway through the park, we go to the Black Pool. If you take that walk today, and I, again, know your history, know your city, take that walk, that Black Pool is back tucked into the back of Druid Hill Park. It is behind the Black Cemetery. It is now cemented over, and it's tiny. But if you have any question about what Black and Brown children and adults and families have experienced over the years, really just through hyper-segregation and hyper-discrimination, take that walk. Come join me one Sunday, and we can demonstrate it for you. So what's happening now is an act of equity. The plan to address these historic wrongs is an act of equity that we would encourage, you know, all of our city agencies to do when we understand that we're still dealing with the artifacts of discrimination. Redlining isn't just a phrase, it's a real thing. And so, you know, take a minute, read our seven pages of analysis. I want to thank Tyler Schnella and Autumn Grant, who are here with me for the work that they've done in preparing that report. And with that, I rest and hand it back to you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I'm going to open the floor to questions from the committee. And first, I'll start off with the sponsor of the bill, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to, again, all the staff that are here today, Director Moore. Appreciate the presentation and do want to echo your support for the folks who work in aquatics and throughout our Rec and Park Division. They are hard workers, and we've appreciated getting to do some training on trauma-informed care and the partnership with you all. And please know that for me, my frustrations are really channeling seeing young people come and leave disappointed because they were unable to swim in a pool that they thought they'd be able to swim in. I did want to just start on the communications side, and you acknowledge this, but we didn't... but we didn't find out that there was any possibility of the pool being closed until March of this year, and only because my team asked. And I've heard similar communication challenges from colleagues. How does Baltimore City Recreation and Park plan stakeholder engagement and communication when a facility is scheduled to go offline for renovation? How long in advance does the planning begin? And what's the typical process for communicating pool closures that are not planned, i.e., you know, you mentioned a couple scenarios, but if a pool is down for repair work just temporarily?
Thank you, Councilman Cohen, for that question. And this is something that our team has continued to look at. As you know, it was only a couple of years ago that we actually stood up a community engagement team. Before that, we didn't even have a community engagement team that was connecting with the community. So there's two steps that we plan to take going forward. Again, once the project go out for bid, we're not going to alarm the community until we get a clear, clean bid. But our goal is, once we have been informed that there is a clear, clean bid and that there is a clear timeline for construction to start, then we will make sure that our community engagement team have a conversation with the different community leaders. In addition, we will make sure that our legislative liaison, Jenny Morgan, communicate with the councilperson of the district that's being impacted. So, those are things that we immediately have identified that we can do a better job, is how we communicate when these closures happen. I tend, and when there's something that comes to my attention, for example, with the Lake Clifton, I did pick up the phone, I did call Councilwoman Ramos. I kept her abreast of what was happening with her pool. And so, we will continue to do those as well. So, we do acknowledge some challenges in our communication with this Patterson Park pool, but we have, as an agency, discussed and talked about how we move forward and making sure that we communicate. To include, as this Patterson Park pool goes on to construction, as Adam stated earlier, it is messy. So there could be challenges that none of us knew about until they get into the construction. But if they're, right now, it's projected to reopen in the summer of 2024. If we see as they're going through this construction, that this is not, that they need to be pushed, you will be communicated with, and we will also communicate with the community. But we're encouraging and pushing our contractors to get this pool open in summer of 2024. But we will do a better job of communicating.
No, and I appreciate that, and do appreciate very much Jenny. We bombard her with constant questions from my office, and I know she gets it from all my colleagues, too. So, very much appreciate her work. And we'll say, you know, and in listening to some of the public testimony, I do think there was this general gap around what's happening, why is it happening? And so, one of the things, just as an action step, I want to ask a follow-up. Could we determine the feasibility of a text alert program for pool users, both in English, Spanish, and any other language necessary? And to share that with the council? Because, again, it seemed like a lot of incomplete communication that I was sharing on the neighborhood Facebook page, would talk to Ernest, the president of PPNA. But I think just generally, community felt like they weren't in the loop. And so, I wonder, as we, as a city, begin to utilize new technologies, whether we could implement something like that?
Councilman Cohen, that's a great idea. That's something we definitely can explore and work with our procurement team, as well as look at some of our other city agents that may have a system already that's in place, that... Okay. But then, the reality also, though, is that system still is going to have limitations, right? Because of the grouping, how you notify, who do you notify? So there will be some challenges uniquely different from the Y who has a standard membership that they can reach to. But I'm basically saying today that we can definitely explore those options and look with our procurement team if there's something that's feasible. And then we'll make sure Jenny keep you all abreast as we go through that process.
Well, I appreciate that. I look forward to checking back with you on that. Mr. Chair, I'm going to yield. I do have further questions, but want to make sure my colleagues get their stuff.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman. I've got two quick ones. I appreciate the presentation. It's pretty helpful to understand the extent of the problems you guys were experiencing in some of the pools across the city, and even more, the age of some of the infrastructure that we're relying on, it's summer in and summer out. One of my first questions is regarding inspections or regular monitoring of that infrastructure. Do we conduct inspections? And if so, how often? We'll start there.
Sure. So yes, all of our pools have to get inspected every year to get an inspection from the Health Department. But as we stated, so I'm just walking through a year. So, as we get ready to close down our pools for this year, our aquatics teams will work with our contractor that we have on call to start, go through the pools, make any notes of anything that they saw significantly that was an impact here. You can do notable leaks, but leaks are so difficult to determine. At the conclusion of that, they will winterize each and every one of our pools. And then, come January, we start having conversations with our contractor to start talking about the rollout. And normally, what we do is we roll out our park pools Memorial Day weekend, and we roll out our neighborhood pools when the school year ends. And that has been our process. And so what happens is, between the pool sitting for the winter, open it back up for the spring, there could be other discoveries, there could be other leaks. And what the team does at that point in time is when we get warm weather that we really can start working on the pools, they will start looking, check, basically checking the different inspections of the pipes, the things that they can visibly see. And then when we get to a warmer standpoint where we've gotten the pool decks pressure washed, our pools pressure washed, because that's another thing that we're addressing as we build new pools. We're putting pool covers in so that the winter months, we're not tearing up our pool surface every year because we have to pressure wash every year, and then we have to paint. Then we start filling the pool. Once we fill the pool, then we discover if there's mechanical issues. If there's a pump motor, every year, I can tell you, we're going to replace pumps. We order those pumps, we have enough time, but it's when it's the pumps that break down in the middle of the season. And it's just so hard. And that's why it's so important that we advance our investments. And one of the things in my approach with Mainline is I asked Mainline to look at the five park pools that was not getting any upgrades, and what does that cost look like? To bring them up to date and being more modern from just a mechanical system where we have the same pool system. Because right now, I can tell you, Councilman, the Lake Clifton Pool has a motor that is a self-priming motor that is needed because it's submerged underneath the pool deck. It's the only one that's made that way. But it's hard to find a pump motor. So, that is the steps that we do. And then as we see issues, we, you know, we fix those with our contractors. I am also excited with the support of this year's budget and this administration. We are actually now have, we're bringing in two pool maintenance positions, full-time positions, that their sole job would be is just pool maintenance year-round. So we're really excited about that, too. That was another step in the right direction.
That's good to hear. And I think, given the number of pools we maintain, it certainly makes sense. My other question is related to that sort of inspection and maintenance component, but more from a capital perspective. One of the things I know we do for our vehicles is we have them on a master lease cycle. So every, what is it, seven or eight years, we expect to replace our vehicles. Do we think about our pool equipment in a similar fashion, noting that we go through pumps every year, or two years, or three years? I have no idea. But in determining whether or not we want to purchase more pumps or can predict that a pump may fail, do we think a little bit forward? And do we have any of this on a schedule so that we can be a little bit more thoughtful from a procurement perspective and even from a city planning perspective on what is, of course, capital investments?
Another great question. And yes, and I will give you an example is that when a pump motor goes down currently, the way it's piped into the pump motor, we have to drain that pool. So as we're doing these upgrades, we are addressing the fact that we can seal the pool, that we can disconnect a motor and put in a new motor without having to drain the pool every time. But what we're also being able to do as we bring online these new systems is our goal is to have two or three motors on the shelf. And that's why we're continuously pushing to get these new systems online so that we can have that. The challenge with Lake Clifton, with its current system, is we have to spend more time in a rebuild mode, rebuilding those motors because it's just so hard to find a motor for that system. But that is our strategy, that is our plan, that we will have motors that sits on the shelf that, as we, like Patterson Park, Drew Hill, Murdoch, and those, they're having a more advanced system now, a new pump motor, where if they ever go offline, they're not sitting. We can just switch it out. So that is our strategy for that.
Yeah, I would certainly encourage as much as possible, I don't know if it's the capital team or the maintenance team, to keep track of those things when we're thinking about opening pools for the next season so that we don't have an instance, like, I think you said, Lake Clifton, where it shut down a week or so into the season. If we know that a pump is near the end of its useful life, we may just want to go ahead and replace that and, you know, eliminate that downtime and eliminate the need for us to try to find a new pump. But appreciate the thought put into it. I'm going to start on this end and work over. Any questions on this side? Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have one question, just about like, just about the phased approach of renovations. Have we explored any type of alternatives with maybe other recreational entities in the city to kind of offset some of those pool closures? So having some sort of alternative that can be in place while the phased renovations are taking place?
What, Councilwoman, what we normally do when we are taking a pool offline, and I'll just go back, for the Druid Hill, there was, like I said, there was clear communication, and they knew that this pool was going to be offline for a couple of years. And what we did was, we encouraged people of what was the nearest pools. And that's normally what we've done. I know in conversations that me and Councilman Cohen, we both similarly read the same articles and that of other urban cities that are experiencing the exact same problems. And one of the things they even spoke about in Louisville is that they in advance bought passes to one of the local facilities, a private facility that they could provide to the citizens. So that's something that I know me and Councilman Cohen had some conversations about. So, there has been some conversations around those opportunities. That is definitely something we can look at. But I think the same challenges that we face is some of our private facilities, they're at capacity, too, so they may not be as open to giving up those spaces because they do have memberships.
I see. Okay, so that actually is good to know. I'm glad that that type of discussion is actually happening for this past one at Patterson Park. I know you and I have been in constant communication about the Middle Branch Recreational Facility and about the renovations there. Do we have a timeline on, do we have a timeline on when that phased approach would be completed for the Patterson Park pool? I just want to make sure that, one, we're all on the same page about that, and, two, for the general public so that they understand when these renovations will be completed?
The current projected date for Patterson Park Pool, without any unexpected construction challenges, is summer of 2024. That that pool will open next summer. Yep. And it's the same case with your outdoor pool at Cherry Hill. But one of the things, we will make sure, is that if, as Mainline comes online, and Mainline, because we originally asked them to delay the construction to after Labor Day when we thought we was going to open the pool, they have been eagerly trying to get teams here to get that started. But right now, at the earliest, we may see them is Labor Day weekend, is when they will activate their team, mobilize, to start that construction. And they will keep, we have monthly meetings with them, and we will keep the elected officials of that impacted area, as well as making sure our community engagement team communicates with the community on what's happening in that construction.
Okay. And I appreciate that. And, you know, just for clarity sake and details, is that beginning of summer, end of summer? You know, are we looking at June, or are we looking at August?
I don't want to lock in a date or what period of time. I want to work, yield to our contractors who have just, they've committed a date and time, but we just need to make sure that that is a solid date. Because one of the things you know as well when we opened up Middle Branch Fitness and Wellness Facility, there was an initial date.
Yes.
Things happened, we had to push that back. So, what I want to be able to do as best we can is to communicate accurate information with accurate dates. And I just don't feel comfortable enough to date other than to say summer of 2024.
Sure. Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Glover?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Moore, you know, you guys are doing some great work, and I do see the work that you guys are doing across the city. But my question is, in my District 13, and I just know from me living in East Baltimore, like, my entire life, like, we had no access to no pools. Like, we have huge parks. One is Bocheck Park, one is College and Square. And, you know, we live in a community where there's, like, the poverty rate is really, really low. And those individuals don't have transportation to go to, like, the Patterson Parks. And at times when they do take a chance to go to Patterson Park, from the years of experiences, and I know personally, you know, crossing Route 40, which is a very, very dangerous street, Orleans Street, to go to Patterson Park, a lot of kids are not going there. And the ones that do have access and do go over there, a lot of them fear because of the fact that in the past, and it's been history, that we've been chased out of the neighborhoods, and certain neighborhoods hit over to the park. So I'm asking, are there any plans, like, for Bocheck Park, or maybe College and Square, that we can, you know, build pools in our neighborhoods? I know some districts that are not too far from ours but have, like, three and a half pools in their district. We have absolutely not one.
Councilman Glover, great question. I can't, I can't tell you how the infrastructure, how they built pools back in the day, but what I can tell you is that we are working closely with our consultants on a comprehensive plan for this agency to look at all of our facilities throughout our city, to also look at recreational gaps that we may have and to come with recommendations, which before that plan, of course, is finalized, it will be also part of a brief into administration. And eventually, we will hope that we can brief council with some form of adoption of this comprehensive plan. So, that is something I will make sure, again, mention to our consultants, but they're on it. But I don't want to commit to, yes, there's a plan to build a pool at Bocheck. All I can tell you is, I want us to complete this comprehensive plan. And then from there, we can determine what are our next steps and what's the best steps. But thank you for acknowledging that.
But I want to plead to you guys, we need it. I mean, we really need it in our community. Our children deserve it. It's been this way since I was a child, and it's still that way. And we're just asking for an opportunity to bring those amenities to our community as well, where we can have the same fun and do the same things within our community as opposed to always going outside our community to take advantage of those amenities. So, please, do your best, try your best. I want to continue to push, and as I push, I want to pull my community along with me so that we can have access to a pool in our district. Thank you. And I want to say, too, you know, I applaud you for, that was one of the questions I wanted to ask early on, that you're going to hire, like, two maintenance guys to go around to do, like, pre-maintenance to make sure those pools are safe so we don't have to go through the disasters that we're going through right now today. So, I applaud you guys for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, thanks for your great, I mean, you and I have been talking a lot about Clifton Pool. But just on that piece around, we did have a parent, which I told you about, did go to Clifton and then was told that the kiddie pool wasn't working. And there was no alert or anything about the kiddie pool not working. And I didn't know. Here I was telling him, "Well, the pool's open." And the guy's like, "No, it's not." And so, you know, that isn't the situation that we want to have happen. So, just back on the communication piece, like I said, the Y does have a, you know, alert if you can sign up for it as a member. The, you know, my understanding is that you have to, you know, sign up to use our pools, and so that could be the pool of people, I mean, no pun intended, to actually, like, do the alert, right? So, I don't think that it's totally out of the question to do that. And I, you know, want to thank Councilman Cohen and his office for coming up with that idea because, you know, sometimes it's a weather issue, sometimes it's a mechanical issue. And given what you and I have discussed about Clifton, that motor's probably going to be going again because of the situation with that pool. So, anyway, I hope that, you know, you do explore that issue. But in the meantime, hopefully, we can get at least an alert, at least to us, you know, saying, you know... saying, you know, that something's going on with the pool.
And thank you, Councilwoman. And, and I will share that we do have BCRP alerts, but we, and it's, it's social media and we're acknowledging that we get everybody's not looking at social media. But every time a pool goes down, we do send out BCRP alerts. But we're going to look at other systems. While there is a great deal of people that are using social media, there are some people who are still
Right.
maybe not as in tune with social media. But we do have an alert system that we do put into all of our social media channels.
And then I had a question about the ranking system that we see here in the slide. I don't have the number on it, but you do have it here. You had indicated that there was a company that helped you with these rankings and that that has helped to figure out, you know, basically prioritizing, you know, what's going to have reconstruction and what's going to have delay and, and we're going to try to keep it open. But in the case of Clifton, you know, it was ranked okay, but then ended up failing anyway. So my question is, what are the criteria here in terms of, and maybe you can get that to us later, but what is the criteria that the company's looking at? Because obviously, they didn't realize that Clifton, very old pool, built very differently than the other pools and that there was a higher risk of the motor going out, but they didn't see that in the report. So I guess if you don't have the criteria with you here, if you could share it with us at some point, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we, we can certainly make that available. The, the ranking system was based on basically three different categories, mechanicals being one, the pool, civil, kind of like site issues, access, ADA, you know, those kind of things, user experience. And then last but not least, architecture. So the restrooms, the building, the facilities of that nature. So it's a hundred-plus-page report that breaks down all that by every pool. And then they were able to come up with this evaluation. But to your point, there are some things that cannot be seen by the naked eye and kind of come up and fail on us. But we're happy to share that if you're interested.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful for the committee as well. I have more questions, but I'll yield thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just briefly from the comptroller's office. The city's CRM GovDelivery can send out text alerts to people without any extra cost or hassle. It's super easy. Wreckin' Parks could use that for pool closures as well, just a thought from our friends at the comptroller's office. Briefly, and then I want to move on, but just when we're talking about communication, even the website wasn't updated regularly. I, I do want to make sure, obviously, text alert, you know, as we've talked about, regular conversation with the councilperson, social media is great, but a lot of people will just go on BCRP's website and so hope that that is also utilized in the future. I want to talk about procurement for a moment. No one on the first IFB put out for Patterson Park Pool, sorry, no one bid on the first IFB put out for Patterson Park Pool renovations. From some of my conversations off the record with contractors, I suspect this is because contractors have had challenges working with the city because of our procurement system. Why does Wreckin' Parks believe no contractor bid on the first IFB? And as a follow-up, what if anything was changed in order to get responses to the IFB the second time around?
So I'll start and I'll let Adam, if you want to add anything, but Councilman Cohen, I don't, I don't have a magical ball that could tell me why people then bid. We can, we can speculate why and, you know, speculations is not something we probably should be assuming. But what I can tell you, just one thing we, we heard from some contractors, is the size of the contract, too. And we, when this project was bid, you, if you notice, the market was really going up. So there's a lot of construction work out now. And so what we was looking for was more of a specialized pool contractor than in the case of us getting a GC. And so that could have been one of the cases, but what we did do this second time, when, when they did bid it out, they just did another round and extended out to any pool contractors versus just GCs. And we was able to, the second time, to get Mainline. And the other thing I will share is that even Mainline, their conversation is just because of the age of our systems, there's just so many unknowns. And Mainline has experience from Drew Hill. They were the contractors on Drew Hill and there were so many unexpected things that they experienced there. So that could have been the case, but again, overall, I don't want to speculate because I, I can't tell you why contractors didn't, didn't bid on it, other than just like a couple of things I did hear from, from some contractors about it, but.
No, understood. But I would also just acknowledge that it does seem like procurement is a real challenge and has been a somewhat consistent challenge. And on that note, and this may be, Nina, more of a question for the city administrator's office slash the administration, but why is procurement, I'm genuinely curious, why is procurement for professional services and capital projects delegated to individual agencies instead of with central involvement from the Department of Finance? Are we considering changing that, centralizing it? It seems like a challenge for agencies to do their own procurement instead, as opposed to having it a little more centralized, like I know they do in other cities, through the Department of Finance?
Thank you, Councilmen. So I don't have a specific response to that. I do know that we've taken the past, I want to say, 18 months or so in doing a deep dive into the procurement process and we've just brought on a new chief of procurement, although that doesn't speak to the centralization of those additional items. So I'm happy to come back with a more thorough answer to you, but I do know that that is a central component of what we've been looking into in order to improve the process and make sure that things get more expedited.
Yeah, I would appreciate, just, this may be for another hearing, but it just seems like a challenging endeavor for agencies like Wreckin' Park to essentially run their own procurement shop and not have oversight, support, a more centralized approach. So would love to pick that up with the administration at a later time.
Can I just jump in here? Sir, when, when I, when I came into the agency, Wreckin' Park didn't have its own contract administration and we saw a lot of delays. We had to use one of our other sister agencies. Since we have brought on our own contract administration, I think in 18 months, over $60 million projects out on the streets, I think that's a phenomenal job of our contract administration team. So I, I will yield to administration to look at the centralized piece, but I will say that since we have brought in our own contract administration team, we have been able to mobilize and push contracts out much faster. And in the case of if someone bid it or not, I don't think that is a procurement issue from a, a contract standpoint. I think DOT has their own contracted division, DPW has theirs. It is, there's a lot that goes into construction versus procurement. And I've met with Adam, he's a phenomenal guy and look forward to working with him from the procurement piece. But I think, yeah, further conversation will probably be needed, but I've seen successes with us bringing on our own contract administration team.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I guess that was kind of where I was going, where you might have been like, we, we took it away from centralized in order to get stuff done. So I think that's just a larger conversation. My, my last question was around, going back to the chart that I, that you had around the rankings, is also the timeline for these. So in design, Coldstream Rec Center in my district has a pool and it's been closed for like two years now. So I appreciate that you wanted to get Clifton open as quick as possible because I wouldn't have had a, a pool nearby at all. So I see that we've got the 2025, 2026 requests and other requests, but if you could give us a timeframe on these, I really want Coldstream in particular open by next summer, but I don't know if any of these are also going to be open. And if you don't have that, we can, that'll be a request from the committee.
I don't have it now, but what we can do, I can get our capital team to tell you where we are. We're, we're at 90, 95% design on Coldstream. So I know the goal is to have it out for bid this fall, but also we're going to have multiple pools out for bid. So hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll see contractors that, that jump online for that. I know Mainline said they're definitely going to be interested in some of these contracts coming forward and they, they do phenomenal work for it. We've seen it in Drew Hill, so.
And you're going to share those plans with the community?
Which the pool plans, I will make sure that our community engagement team, there's been dialogue and conversation with some of these.
Yeah, yeah, we, we've, we have been engaged with, with both of those sites. They are going to be packaged together. We have shown different iterations, gotten feedback. It may be appropriate to visit once again, but I'll.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know when Chum has seen the last version of the Coldstream plan.
Sure. So I'm happy to share that with you. I want to be clear, very clear right now, even if we bid this fall and get a great bid immediately, it's going to take a year plus to, to construct. Coldstream and Tuanda are completely starting over, like
I understand.
from scratch. So whether it's 12 or 18 months, I got to look into that, but summer 2024 is not.
Not realistic. Okay, it's important to set expectations. Half of our job is actually managing expectations. So I do appreciate that. And just making sure that then Clifton will stay open and active so that we have another place. Yeah, if you could supply the committee with the rest of the timelines here, that for the rest of the pools, that would be wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can I add to that? This, this chart that we're referencing here?
Yeah.
This is all very contingent about continued support at the CIP. We've been very
Understood.
You know, we go for one year, we ask for design funding, we get community engagement, we go through the design process, get a better idea of actually what it's going to cost to construct. Then we go back another year to get that construction funding. But as you see at the bottom of the list, this is, there's a substantial amount of money required to fulfill this and that number probably goes up daily. And this is on top of all our other commitments to our rec centers and our parks and different things around the city. So I'm confident in my team and direction of Director Moore and where we're going with this, but we will need continued support from administration to see this through.
Point taken. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My last question, you know, the mayor, while this was sort of hot, the mayor said that we can't continue to put Band-Aids on pools, which I think is fair. However, a Wreckin' Park employee expressed some concerns to me that the pump technology being used, being installed at Patterson and other pools is less reliable than what we're using at Drew Hill and maybe more prone to outages. Can you speak to this? And if it is different, why aren't we using the most reliable technology out there?
So, it's a great question. There's been conversation in our agency, there was a decision that was made by previous aquatics teams that they wanted to change systems. We have since went to Mainline and asked Mainline to spec the Drew Hill system. It's going to be the Drew Hill system. So that's, that's, that's the best I can tell you is that, yes, there was original conversations with the then aquatics team that they wanted a different system, but I have spoken to our capital team when this was brought to my attention. If we're going to go down the path that we're talking about and being consistent, then the systems need to be similar. Am I, okay.
Sorry, so I, I just want to understand that. So you're saying that we are going to spec in the same way and the information that was shared with me is no longer accurate, that we are using a different or lesser technology?
Yes, sir. That's what I'm, I'm saying to you is we've asked Mainline to give us the, what it's going to cost to spec the system that we're using at Drew Hill. It did not make sense to, to pivot back. So you, you received accurate information, but I can tell you now that we, we've already jumped on this. When it came to my desk, it was a concern for me. So we are working with Mainline now.
Understood and appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So I, I think we are, we're good on questions. Director, I want to thank you for taking the opportunity to do the hard work of pulling together all that information so that we could have a robust and hopefully productive conversation. It sounds like there are still things we're working out with our pools and I think whatever we can do to be smarter in the future and hopefully not end up in this situation again will go a long way towards making, make sure our young people can swim. So, Councilman Cohen, any closing statements before you want to wrap up?
Yeah, just briefly, and again, thank you, Mr. Chair, for holding this hearing and for allowing the public to testify as well early on. And again, thank you to Director Moore, your team. Also, the other Director Moore, really appreciate the civil rights perspective and I think it's important when we talk about pools, they are such a racialized space in our country and certainly in our city. And so appreciate you adding that layered context as well. I just want to say that my sincere hope as we move forward is that we are in a great communication pattern that folks know well in advance if their pool is going to be closed for renovations and that by and large, we don't have to close pools during the summer months. I really do see it as an equity issue, as a health issue, as a fitness issue, as a safety issue, you know, and in a city where we struggle with having things to do for our young people, it is so critically important that our entire portfolio is available. And again, I do appreciate the work that your team has done this summer and other summers to extend opportunities for our children. And I look forward to seeing you and other folks today at 5:00 at the Patterson Park Splash Pad pop-up. So again, thank you, Mr. Chair, and look forward to all of the follow-up.
Thank you. This hearing's in recess.